We're good. Okay, thank you very much. Council, we're going to observe a moment of silence and recognition of a national day of mourning. Turn things over to our clerk.
Good morning, everyone. Mark Danieli in Canada on April 28th, a day dedicated to remembering those who've lost their lives or suffered injury or illness in the workplace. It's also a time to collectively renew our commitment to improve health and safety in the workplace and prevent further injuries, illnesses, and death. With each workplace tragedy, there are loved ones, family members, friends, and coworkers who are directly affected, left behind, and deeply impacted. Let us remember them now.
Okay, so I'll turn things over to our clerk to do the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor Gamble. Counselor Burley. Counselor Carlton. Counselor McQueen. Counselor Desai. Counselor Patterson. Warden Hicks. Counselor Columbus. Counselor Keveney. Counselor Body.
Present.
Counselor O'Leary sends his regrets. Counselor Thomas. Counselor Woodbury. Counselor Millen. Counselor Soever. Counselor Bordenial. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Hutchinson. Thank you. We have all members in attendance except for Counselor O'Leary. Counselor Thomas is attending his behalf.
I'm sorry. There we go. Thank you. And Counselor Thomas, welcome back. Nice to have you here again. Okay, we're on to the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Ania Shinabik, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden Ashani, and the Wendat, Windot, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Meti and the Inuit whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Counsel, is there any declaration of interest, pecuniary, or otherwise? Seeing none, we will proceed. But if one does arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. We're on to item 7A, which is County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated April 14th. I need a mover to put it on the floor. So moved by Counselor Hutchinson and seconded by Counselor Boardignac. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. Item 7B is the Committee of the Whole Close Meeting Minutes dated April 14th, 2022. I need a mover, please. Moved by Counselor Thomas, seconded by somebody online, Counselor Boardignac. Any discussion on those? Well, if we didn't have to have discussion, we'd have to go into close. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That too is Carrie. Thank you very much. We don't have a closed meeting matter. We have one bylaw, the bylaw with respect to our procedural bylaws or the amendments therein. So I need a mover, please. Moved by Counselor Mill, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Any discussion on that bylaw? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? That too is Carrie. Thank you very much. We're on to item number 10, which is good news and celebrations. Who's got Counselor Columbus here first?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, Mr. Warden, and our CAO, Kim Wingrove, for the very informative presentation you did to our council on Monday. It certainly was very well received, very in-depth, and great to see this tradition resuming again after a long absence. It's very much appreciated that you make the effort to come to our councils and engage with our separate individual communities. So thank you for that. We appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome, Counselor Columbus, and I agree that Kim did a great job. Next is Counselor Body.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning to everyone. Just a quick update, I guess. I attended the Canadian Nuclear Association Conference a week or two ago with Economic Development Officer Steve Furness from the county and many others. It was fascinating to learn about clean energy and, of course, nuclear being in the middle, but isotopes, small modular reactors, energy storage, and how important that's going to be as we transition from carbon-based energy to to electricity and really cleaner, cleaner energy. On that, we've had two announcements in the past week, one this morning. One is Maka Cahill, or as they pronounce it, Call, a local construction and fabricating company owned by two indigenous gentlemen or partner of two indigenous gentlemen and Cahill, which is a big manufacturing company, have just signed an agreement with TC Energy for their pump station project as it moves along. And, you know, they still need to get their approvals. But Maka Call has been selected to conduct a review of the proposed pump test storage project. So this is good for local jobs. And in fact, at the end, they say we're committing, committed to leveraging local expertise and knowledge by working and partnering with those who possess in-depth knowledge of the region and communities. And we continue to seek opportunities through these projects. So, you know, as these projects move ahead, there's going to be lots of jobs. It's going to be good for Gray County. The other one that just came out this morning, On Sound Based Hydrogen Optimized has signed an MOU with Green Hydrogen International for the proposed development of large electrolyzer manufacturers, manufacturing in Texas. They will produce 60 gigawatts for a hydrogen city production and salt cavern storage to be built in South Texas. This will be the largest hydrogen storage facility in the world. And it's pretty impressive that we've got two local companies that have been around for not much more than a year in this, in this forward-moving industry that we're all going to have to get there and that we're already leaders in the world and in the country, right here in Gray County. So I think that's really good news. And actually, I'm going to be stepping out about 10:45 to attend a Council of Great Lakes Region of Presentation, over 100 people from around Great Lakes, West Stefferness and with Jessica Lindhorn from the Nuclear Innovation Institute over in Saukine Shores to talk about clean nuclear energy and these opportunities that I've just mentioned. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that update, Counselor Body, and that is very exciting news indeed. Counselor Boardignac, I see your hand, but I'm going to go to Counselor Desai first.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. The first bit of, it's more of an acknowledgement rather than good news or celebration. This is going to be our last meeting before we go into nomination period. And I just want to take a quick moment to express gratitude and admiration to clerks' departments, not just across the county, but across the province as they engage in this crazy exercise that we call democracy, and I wish them the best. The second is more of a report from the Good Roads Association Conference. I'm not sure if anyone spoke to that at the last meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend. Just a few highlights. I won't use up too much time here. In terms of attendance, the conference did achieve pre-pandemic levels of attendance. And obviously, was the first in-person conference since the pandemic hit. And it was also coincidentally the last in-person conference before the pandemic hit. So we've come full circle, and I want to say we're back to normal, but I'm not going to jinx it. Asset management was a big, was a big concern. It was a big item that was discussed. There was multiple sessions around asset management and asset management softwares and the various provincial timelines, regulatory timelines that are coming up in regards to asset management. I did feel a bit vindicated because I have been banging that topic for eight budgets now. So I was happy to see that it got a fairly large stage. And if there's any, any other questions from any members of council regarding the board of directors and other aspects of the Ontario Good Roads Association, I'm more than happy to respond to those.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. Counselor Boardignac, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Gray County Council, I just wanted to acknowledge late Counselor Bob Gamble. Last Saturday, we were honored to dedicate a park in his honor right across from Tressel Bridge and by town hall. Many of you knew Mr. Gamble, of course. It's 40 years of service. I heard the stories of how many election periods he went through. There's many ex councillors as well as county councillors there to acknowledge that park dedication, along with his family and dedication from our own mayor Soever. So just, I just wanted to acknowledge that because Bob Gamble was almost 40 years in a chair of democracy for Gray County as well as Town of Blue Mountains and preceding that Collingwood Township in Thornbury. So I just want to make the rest of the Gray County Councils aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very appropriate that we acknowledge that. I do not see any other. Deputy Warden?
I don't know. Just wanted to bring forward some information. We had our Gray County Farm Safety Meeting the other night. Mr. Gamble is our president, and we are setting, we have set up a Facebook page with regards to events and things that are happening. And one of the big events that we do have is we have the poster contest for the local fairs. So if you want to reach out and your local fair, and we have, we've upped the prize money. We've wanted to try to attract some good young artists. And we have three different categories that we run with farm safety around the farm. And so anyway, check it out. And it's sort of awareness. And again, we know there's a lot of farm activities happen throughout the county. And we try to inspire our young people to sort of bring that safety along with that part. So check it out. And if you have things to add or whatever, but certainly it's something new that we were doing. So thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I do not see anyone else. We good? Thank you, everyone. We're just looking to adjourn now. Moved by the deputy warden, seconded by Counselor Patterson. That we adjourn. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you. We'll just take a second and switch over to Committee of the Whole. We're good, Olivia? Excellent. Thank you. So I call the meeting to order. This is now Committee of the Whole. Is there any declaration of interest, pecuniary, or otherwise? Seeing none, once again, I would just say that if one occurs to you during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Item three. Guess that puts Kevin on the deck. Oh, that's 11. My apologies. Thank you. Okay. Is there anything in the consent agenda, counsel, that requires a separate discussion? Is there anything that needs to be pulled? One, once, twice, gone. I'm gonna ask for a mover, please. Moved by Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Mackey.
Mr. Warden?
Yes?
I had trouble turning my mics on there. I'd like to pull item C, which is the blue metals report.
Thank you, sir. I see. Okay, so we do have a mover and seconder. So with the exception of item 5C, that the consent agenda be approved is presented with the one item being pulled. Any discussion? All those? Counselor McQuinn?
It's nice to see that we are tendering for two electric trucks.
Okay, I'm going to call the question now. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. Where are we now? Six A? Okay. We're on six A. That's dealing with the CP rail trail maintenance. I've put Stephanie, I believe, on deck. And I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Mill, seconded by Counselor Thomas. And Stephanie, you have the floor.
Good morning, County Council. Please excuse me in advance for maybe running out of breath. Something growing in here. And it picks and chooses where it wants to kick. And sometimes that's my lungs. So we're just here this morning as a follow-up report to the rail trail resurfacing report that was brought forward in late 2021. And so I hope to discuss existing and future trail funding challenges and maintenance expenses to suggest additional funding options for maintenance efforts, review the overall public perception of safety along the trail, and identify trail opportunities, trail promotion opportunities, and to complete further data collection related to trail ridership. I also wanted to acknowledge the new forestry trail coordinator, Natalie Machalko. She was sitting in the back of the room. She was instrumental in putting this report together. I also want to just give everyone an advanced notice that Matt Workman, our county GIS specialist, will be speaking immediately after my report, and then we'll jointly take questions and answers. Sorry, questions and comments. So again, just in terms of the background information, council supported proceeding with the completion of the trail grading and stone dusting project for the remaining 35.5 kilometers of the rail trail. So this would span from Berkeley all the way down to Dundalk. And the total tender would cost around $926,466. Given the significant financial contribution being made by the county to complete these works, staff see it as pertinent to outline how the public asset can be sustained to a high standard. We also want to ensure that this investment will be widely enjoyed by a variety of trail users. Just wanted to highlight some of the funding challenges going forward. So as many of you are aware, a lot more people are discovering gray. And with that, we're observing a trend through the Forestry Trails Department through an increase in inquiries and requests related to the standard and upkeep of county properties. So this is both the trail and forest properties. There's a realized need to further invest in these properties to enhance the user experience and overall safety. Currently, around 70% of the total forestry and trails budget is currently used for the rail trail maintenance efforts. With the significant draw from reserves and capital projects such as parking lots anticipated to be built out over the next 10 years, there will be little flexibility to take on any significant projects, including grading or stone dusting efforts like what is being completed in 2022. Staff are aiming to move this rail trail asset toward a high-quality standard. And through that, a balance needs to be achieved between spending on maintenance efforts and supportive infrastructure, such as parking, washrooms, signs, et cetera. So just going to go through a few different maintenance needs that come up along the rail trail year over year. So first of all, we have grading and potholes. The wear and tear leads to erosion, water pooling, and redding. Through research of this report, for this report, it was actually really interesting. Most jurisdictions that we've connected with are doing a very similar process than us in the reviewing their maintenance efforts, mostly because there's been an increase, significant increase in market pricing for material labor. Non-motorized trails tend to complete grading less frequently compared to motorized trails. And surface upgrades are more common on motorized trails. So just as an example, Bruce and Gray County, so sections are required annually for regrading purposes. And then we looked at Godrich to Guelph, as well as the Georgian Trail, which is a local trail here in Gray County. Those are both non-motorized trails, and they grade their trails about every three to five years. And there are a few potholes. Here are some images just to illustrate. These are sections that are north of Berkeley. So these sections have already been graded, stone dusted, and compaction was completed in previous year's efforts. So what we're observing here is that even once you complete the grading, stone dusting efforts, there is continual ongoing maintenance. So typical reasons for trail condition degradation can be attributed to a combination of heavy rainfalls and non-winterized motorized vehicle use. So moving on to gates. Along the rail trail, at every intersection where the trail abuts or crosses a road, we have a gate. Those gates are left open in the winter time for snowmobiles to get through. And all gates currently can accommodate ATV inside-by-sides up to 54 inches in size. We completed an extensive data collection project last summer. And through that, we were able to do a bit of analysis of what's going on with some of these assets on the trail. So just as, as an example, this image illustrates that the gate isn't really serving the purpose that it's supposed to. There's clearly instances where the gates are being bypassed, and that's quite significant. So we observed the motorized section of the trail, there's about 60% of gates that have been installed that are being bypassed. So issues that arise from this is that it creates perpendicular redding until you have a vehicle or trail user that's going this to a trail. It can lead to sediment transfer and promotes larger, larger-sized vehicles to access the trail. Through, through the gate analysis, some of the general observations made is that it was common for gates to be bypassed in locations where there was no natural deterrent. So what I mean by that is there is no large tall grasses, there is no ditching or boulders. And so it was a clear path for someone to bypass a gate. Smaller gates, so four feet versus six feet, are less likely to be damaged. Out of the damaged gates with no bypass, the ones with larger gate gaps have damage. And there tends to be a marginally higher rate of gate damage on motorized section of, on the motorized section of the trail. Non-motorized rail trails had minimal gate damage, damage to the gates, whereas those up permitted motorized vehicles tend to have regular ongoing damage to the gates. So moving on to culverts and bridges. Here's just a snapshot of the expenses incurred to do regular maintenance as well as replacement efforts for various culverts and bridges along the rail trail asset. The county transportation services assist with maintenance on this, along this assist with maintenance, sorry, for the assets that are less than three meters in size. However, typically contract, contract out larger projects. With regards to signage, the county has been responsible for installing, maintaining, and coordinating risk management trail etiquette, signage, primitive use signage, and civic address signage, whereas ATV and snowmobile clubs install their own signage, such as various routes and stop signs. Staff will be updating the signage in this year, which is exciting. So we have looking to create the signage to be a bit more aesthetically pleasing as well as account for various safety factors. There's a lot of signage that's placed throughout the entire length of the trail, and it's just not coordinated overly well. So we're hoping to minimize the frequency of signs that are located along the trail. We did a bit of a comparison of the overall maintenance expenses incurred by the county rail trail and as well as the Georgian Trail, which is located and spans from Meaford, Town of Blue Mountains, all the way to Collingwood. So just as an example here, the average expenses incurred by the county rail trail for maintenance, it came out to be around roughly $2,338 per kilometer. And this included grading, pothole repairs, gate repairs, culverts and bridges, signage, and noxious weed removal. With respect to the Georgian Trail, in terms of their 2021 expenses, they pay roughly $1,779 per kilometer. This includes grooming, tree removal, general operations, garbage receptacles, bicycle repair stations, privies such as outhouses, grass cutting, and daily winter grooming. As you can see here, the Georgian Trail is able to do a lot more that extends beyond just remedial maintenance efforts on their trail. And staff are keen to further explore how the CP rail trail budget can be redistributed to further achieve additional supportive infrastructure like the Georgian Trail. Also want to share an interesting stat. So Town of Blue Mountains recently invested in four eco-trail counters. And last year, from January 1st, 2021, all the way through to December 31st, 2021, there were a total of 529,381 trips counted cumulatively by all four trail counters. That's a lot of trail ridership. So in terms of funding sources, the ATV and snowmobile clubs have contributed financially towards various trail upgrades over the years. This includes new gates, bridge decking, safety railings, bridge replacement, and culvert replacement projects. Their contributions have always been greatly received. In both Bruce and Halliburton County, the respective ATV clubs contribute financially to the maintenance of the county rail trails. For several years, the county has contracted forestry and trail maintenance efforts through Grace Apple Conservation Authority. This partnership has been working really well, and we continue to rely on their expertise and technical background. We also lean on the county's transportation services department, as mentioned earlier, to help with general maintenance efforts for the bridge and culvert assets. We're looking to get into adopt a trail and stewardship programs. This area would be new to the county's forestry and trails department, and we're hoping that this would really, yeah, better connect and facilitate volunteer efforts. We received another interesting statistic. So the Bruce Trail Organization in Gray Bruce had over 4,000-plus volunteer hours in the last eight months, which is a had over four thousand plus volunteer hours in the last eight months, which is a untapped resource that we, we think we can maybe leverage. And then we also are looking at the memorial tree program. So this may not be a profit driven program, but it would add significant benefit to the rail trail in terms of promoting the overall health of the corridor and providing habitat for insects as well as just offering an option for those to memorialize a loved one. In terms of trail safety, staff continue to receive comments from non-motorized trail users or prospective trail users wanting to use the facility but are hesitant due to compatibility or safety concerns. We also want to acknowledge that there's significant growth and development slated for areas that are in proximity to the trail in Owen Sound, Markdale and Dundalk. There are ongoing general concerns with equitable access to the rail trail. With the funding challenges to keep up with requests for improving this amenity and significant expense, maintenance expenses incurred year over year is important to reflect on who this trail is designed for and whether it is, is serving this, this intent. Further data collection around ridership type will hopefully help inform further recommendations on how best to approach maintenance needs and overall access to the trail. In terms of next steps, we need to explore ways to further understand the collective impact of each respective permitted use type and understand how this best, may best inform a fair approach of resource allocation. Staff are hoping to connect with the Dufferin Gray ATV club to see whether there would be an option to further contribute funding toward the upkeep of the trail. So this, this money could be put toward trail grading, dust suppression, stone dusting and compaction. Staff have received comments from non-motorized vehicle users of the trail, wondering whether the ATV clubs are contributed, contributing toward the upkeep of this asset. Additional funding options will be reviewed and continued partnerships. We're also hoping to enhance the profile of the trail. This is where things, from my perspective, are really exciting. There's a lot of opportunity here to look at promoting cycling and walking challenges along the trail, coordinating races and other fundraising events, promoting tourism amenities, encouraging volunteerism, promoting additional clubs to connect to this trail, enhancing social media presence as well as just enhancing the three sixty digital imagery that Matt's going to showcase in a minute. We also talked about, I'm not certain if any of you are familiar with the G to G trail, but it's a challenge. And so we've talked about maybe creating our own up here where it'd be a O to O challenge where you'd come from Orangeville up to Owen Sound. And maybe our stats here just showing on the, the graph. So this is, that's the G to G rail trail. So it goes to Guelph to Godrich. And this is just their website, website statistics. So it's their in comparison to the Gray County rail trails, statistic, website statistics. So it'd be really neat if we could further promote our asset similar to them. I just want to also acknowledge that it'll be really important to stay connected and aware of the public interest throughout this process. As changes are made, staff will continue to seek, seek, seek feedback from the public. And that leads me to the recommendation. At this report we received, staff explore additional funding options for rail trail maintenance efforts. Staff be directed to review whether the rail trail is perceived as a safe recreational asset for non-motorized users. Staff be directed to further promote this trail as a Gray County tourism amenity. And staff be directed to complete further data collection related to trail ridership. And with that, I'm hoping to pass it off to Matt. He was connecting in virtually and as mentioned, hopefully you can take questions and comments after his brief presentation.
Okay. Hi. Good morning, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Matthew Wortman and I work for Gray County as a GIS specialist in the IT department. And one of my jobs at the county is to empower staff with spatial, spatial technology known, known as GIS or geographical information systems. And GIS enables staff to access the information they need to carry out their work more effectively and make better informed decisions. And this project, working with Natalie and Steph, is a great example of technology in action. So I just wanted to give a quick demo of the things we did for this rail trail project. So I'll just share my screen. Okay, are you able to see these, this CP rail trail data collection on my screen?
We are, yes.
Okay, great. So last summer-
Just one second, Matt. I could see it on my screen, yes. Okay. Just give us a quick second.
Is it, does Matt need to max his screen?
Do you need to max your screen, Matt?
Let me try that again.
I don't know.
Are you able to see that?
Not everyone, Matt.
It's, it's, it's on the screen.
Oh, there we go.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so last summer, a group of volunteer staff and summer students collected data on the trail. We, before entering this project, we knew there was some, some issues, maintenance issues, signage needs that needed to be addressed, but we didn't actually know what was there. So the whole purpose of the, our work last summer was to collect data to figure out where there are deficiencies. And one of the things we had set up was a mobile app that allowed it, or that allowed our volunteers and students to collect data with their mobile device. And what you're seeing on my screen now is what that looked like. And they walked a section of the trail and they, the location was marked and based on the observation, they were gathering data for about gates, signage, parking hazards or any other features. And this is a smart form, so when something is selected, it will create a bunch of new questions that is interactive and allows the person to enter the information that we were looking for. So lots of data was collected last year and the, the next challenge became, well, how do we sort this all out? How do we empower Natalie and Stephanie with tools to make decisions around what we've collected? So with that, we developed a custom application which consolidated all of the data and allowed them to pull any information they wanted. So what you're seeing on my screen now is that application. And here, this is the trail and all those little points are an individual observation point. We had almost a thousand observations, so very, very rich data set. That's powerful for us to make informed decisions. I just really quickly wanted to show you a few examples. Stephanie had mentioned the gates, the issue with the gates being bypassed. One of the ways we can, Stephanie was able to figure out where they were located and figure out how many and the occurrence of how often that happened was to set filters and take a look at the data. So I'll just give you a quick example of that. I'll set a filter to show just where the gates have been bypassed. And now they're there on the screen. And just a quick one right here in Dundalk, if I select that, you can see the gate shows up, you can click on the image and see a photo of it. But also some more information that was collected. But this photo doesn't really show the gate bypass. So we also collected three hundred and sixty degree image, imagery along the entire section of the trail. And that's available on this app as well. So each camera represents a three sixty image. If you click on that, you can view the imagery. Just takes a second to load. And so, so we're at this gate here. I'll just move up a little bit. So you can see that better. So now we can look around all from the comfort of our office or desk. And we can clearly see how, where and how this particular gate has been bypassed. So the imagery is very useful. Sometimes information was missed in the field and we can always go back later. And this allows maintenance and planning staff to make decisions around what to do next. This imagery is, right now it's only being used for internal purposes for planning staff, but it has good capabilities to be presented in a public map where members of the public can see, look, see where the trail looks like, maybe in their backyard or maybe they're planning a trip to Gray County and they just want to see what it looks like so they can use this imagery as well. And yeah, just the, the, the map itself, the app has a whole bunch of functionality and tools filtering capabilities that really aided Stephanie and Natalie to, to build the report that they presented today. So with that, I'll finish my presentation.
Thank you very much, Matt. We'll go to a cast. Counselor decide.
Listen, Ward, next. If you're not going to call me Counselor Decide, appreciate Batman or James Bond. I dress up for that. Thank you very much, Stephanie and Matt, for the presentation. Two questions. The first one, the application that Matt just showed us, is that available to the public? Can the public go on and sort of play around, I guess? Question two is with regards to the, the challenges around the base for the rail trail itself. I say this myself as a, as a bicycle user that sections of the rail trail do have some significant issues with the gravel and the type of gravel that it's used. But I also understand why that's used. So if we do go, go switch to the stone dust or limestone, I think it said, how does that affect the ATV use and how does that affect the integrity of the, of the the trail surface itself? And would that mean we need to make more frequent maintenance runs on those? Does it deteriorate quicker? So I'm just trying to look at it from that because I do agree that in some, some areas that I've hesitated to ride my bike to that. So, thank you.
Yeah. Matt, do you want to start off?
Yeah, sure. I can answer the first part of that question. No, right now the imagery is not available to the public. However, we do have plans to put that in a publicly facing app in the future.
Thank you for that. And Stephanie?
Thank you for, thank you for the question, Counselor Decide. So yeah, with respect to the surfacing material types, it's, it's, there's not a clear good answer to provide. So the limestone and stone dusting is a more favorable product for cyclists as well as pedestrians and other mobility users that are outside of ATVs. ATVs can certainly use that trail surface, but they, it will be more prone to damage and degradation. Bruce County use M gravel, so it's a, like a, like greater granular type. And it's not as suitable for other user types. So they are accommodating the ATVs through their approach more than cyclist. And M gravel is cheaper. And so that's where it's, it's tricky to find that balance of what product you go with. M gravel being cheaper and it would be less likely to be damaged by ATVs or the stone dust and limestone, which is what the the Georgian Trail use predominantly and we've used on, on, on our trail. That would be accommodating for all user types. So yeah, it's, it's a tricky equation to figure out and the approach we've taken so far is to look at accommodating for all user tapes, acknowledging that it potentially would lead to more maintenance costs.
Thank you, Warden. Thanks. Thank you, Stephanie, for that answer and thank you, Matt, as well. So the follow-up question is, and I did notice on, on the report that you do mention that it's, it's hard to provide equal comparison, the apple to apples comparison. So the question now that I have is when we did the trail master plan, the cycling and trail master plan, one of the important things that we looked at, Warden, it was the continuity of being able to get from, from point A to point B through this map. My concern is if Bruce County is using M gravel to accommodate the ATVs on, on the rail trail that goes through the Bruce County, should we also not be looking at doing something similar and accommodating the ATVs to maintain that continuity along the rail trail? And again, like I said, I say this as someone who's a cyclist myself, but in terms of the continuity. And at the end of the day, with, with the cost, we have to make the decision as council is whether we want to attract ATVs or cyclists and go from there. And that's a policy decision, I would argue. And good asset management keeps costs low. But that is the question to staff. Should we be looking, should we be prioritizing the continuity for ATVs from along the rail trail? Thank you.
You, Mr. Warden, yeah, just want to, to further clarify that the surface that will be placed along the rail trail, so stone dusting limestone, would accommodate ATVs. So it's not going to deter them for using that surface whatsoever. It's just such that, more so the M gravel material is less prone to degradation and it's less accommodating for cyclists. So it's, the ATV world is being accommodated either way.
Thank you. And Randy, I observed you bobbing your head a lot. Is there anything you wanted to add?
I'd just like to add that, you know, it's, it's tough when we're trying to balance everyone's needs. We want to try to provide as, as much access to, to our trail system, recognizing that CP rail trail is a significant backbone to the overall trail system, as, as Counselor Decide noted. From a continuity perspective, it's the, it's one of the key connectors. In fact, it's part of the provincial trail system. So, so to try to accommodate a wide variety of users, but also keeping our maintenance costs low is, is the challenge that's before us. And that's why you see the staff recommendation, we want to explore those funding options and other opportunities. We want to have the discussions with the ATV clubs to see if there's opportunities to help with the maintenance of, of this trail, to keep it at a high, high standard and to protect the investment that council's making with respect to this trail to accommodate a wide variety of users. So that's, that's why we've identified that as part of the next steps. We think there's super potential for the CP rail trail to support a wide variety of users and we want to promote it as Stephanie indicated to, to support that. And we just want to make sure that from a maintenance perspective, we're able to absorb those costs. And we're hoping that through partnership funding, like, like the partnership funds that have been provided by snowmobile clubs and ATV clubs in the past, that they'll be there to help support as, as funding partners to, to support that. So, so that's, that's why we're looking at all these options and that's why we wanted to provide this report to council today to, to discuss that. But as Stephanie noted, we are seeing more growth in our communities around the CP rail trail. With that, we're probably seeing more non-motorized users accessing portions of the trail to the point where we might even see sections of the trail, we may recommend paved, paved sections of the trail to make it even more accessible for non-motorized users. So, so we're exploring all options and, and we want to provide the latest and greatest information to council today and at least get some further direction to staff to, to proceed with next steps.
Thank you. Very good. And you finished, Counselor Decide? Okay, I'm going to go next to Counselors, whoever.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And certainly trails are a very important part of our communities. So we in the Blue Mountains of the Georgian Trail here, which we share with Miford and Collingwood and- we share with Meaford and Collingwood and, and, you know, I think it's, it's a very important link between the communities and more and more people are using that as a way to commute even on their bicycles. During the summer months at least, and we've started maintaining it in the winter by just grooming it and packing it down. So it's easier for our seniors to go for a walk without trudging through a lot of deep snow. So on that, I, I note the difference between in costs between the motorized trails and the non-motorized trails and, and certainly there's more damage to gates on the motorized trails. And I would imagine there's more damage to the surface as well on the motorized trails. So. Have we looked at maybe a trail pass or something for motorized users? To help defer some of those costs, we're always looking at. You know, in this report is titled funding options. So perhaps just like snowmobile trails, there could be a fee for the motorized users, which would help cover the extra costs generated by the motorized use of this trail. Also perhaps, you know, some parking lots with fees. Now, when you institute fees, then you have to have some enforcement mechanism. And I know the the county's not well served with bylaw to deal with that. And I think while that raises a whole other question of governance models and whether, you know, there has to be, you know, if we're trying to raise funds by introducing fees, then you have to have a way of collecting them and making sure they're collected. And so, you know, how much of a benefit is there if you don't have existing staff to deal with that? So it's a complex issue, but certainly it appears to me from looking at this report is that the motorized use is generating more, a lot, you know, the costs. And so maybe there should be a way to try to capture that through a pass system or something. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I just want to acknowledge, and yeah, we'll, we'll certainly take Mr. Counsel Soever's comments and explore some of those, those options further.
Thank you. Counsel gamble, you're next.
Yes. Excuse me. I was involved in the snowmobile club right from existence on the rail trail. I run the room for a lot of hours and I know the amount of money that, that comes into this county because of motorized vehicles. It's huge. Whether, you know, you have to be out there to see it. And, you know, I, I think the OFSC, the Snowmobile Club Association and the four wheeler ATV people, they do contribute. I mean, maybe we don't get enough, but we do. They're quite interested in making sure the trail system stays there. So, you know, I think we, we, we don't have the numbers here, but we need to know if you really want to pursue it. What kind of money is brought in because of it? Because I think you'll find with people staying at hotels, hotels. That this is a huge number. That's all I want to.
Steph. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for your comments, Counsel gamble. Just wanted to offer just some further, further thoughts with respect to the snowmobile vehicle use. It does tend to have less impact on the trail because there's the snow that keeps that protective barrier. So from our research and observation, it's more the ATV vehicles that tend to cause more significant damage. Certainly acknowledge in terms of their funding contributions, both the clubs, it's been significant. And we do appreciate that relationship and definitely want to continue that going forward. We also want to explore the ridership data along this trail. Because we also see a significant untapped opportunity to explore other ridership types. So cyclists, pedestrians and who, who may be the users that aren't accessing the trail for various purposes or reasons. So we need to better understand that comprehensive picture to inform decisions going forward.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Stephanie and Matt for your report. First of all, I would thank Matt for the photos around that access point just north of Dundalk. And I'll say that Southgate residents are not predisposed to being hemmed in by gates or fences, but that being as it may. I suppose it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody that motorized vehicles cause more wear and tear on the trail. I mean, if we didn't allow vehicles on our roads, they'd last a lot longer too. So, you know, I guess it shouldn't like, as I say, it shouldn't come as a big surprise. So I'm very supportive, as Counselor Gamble pointed out of the four wheelers. They do bring a lot of revenue into the county, into the region. They are spenders. They tend to come, you know, from outside the area. A lot of them, but we do have a lot of local folks as well that use the trails. And I think it's a great opportunity to promote our region through the use of the trail and the encouragement of using the trail. And I want to give a shout out to the ATVers. They do a great job of, of promoting the region. And finally, I'll say that if you're looking for branding, it's from Southgate to Owen Sound. Not Orangeville. Just saying. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you for that. Somehow we can build hand over into that, couldn't we? And Westbury, yes. Next is Counselor Robinson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And I will be brief because I recognize we have a really fantastic award presentation coming up. Two points, if I might. I, I look on page 15 of the report for the adopted trail and stewardship program. Looking forward to that being further developed and having a really great initiative that can, can support the maintenance and educational component of the CP rail trail. So that was just a highlight I wanted to make. And any opportunity that I can to speak about equestrian pursuits or equestrian sport, I take advantage of it. So I'm wondering if you could just provide some response in terms of ridership data. Are you seeing individuals riding their horses on the trails? Why or why not? Is there an opportunity to enhance that any further? So thank you, Mr. Warden.
Through you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Counselor Robinson, for your question. Yeah, in terms of the equestrian question, we do know there are riders along the trail that are equestrian users. And we have received comments more recently that the challenge in accessing the trail right now is a parking facility that's large enough to accommodate trailers. And so that was part of our capital works budget to look at rail trail parking facilities that would further promote and access different user types. And equestrian is definitely one of those on our radar. We don't have any data that specifically speaks to how many equestrians access the trail. I don't know if a trail counter could also pick that up, but that's something that we definitely want to look into. And whether it's just having some, like a staff member situated along the trail and collect that qualitative information. But if, if we can get that quantitative information through the trail counters, and that would also be beneficial.
Mr. Warden, I just want to say thank you very much to staff for a really great report and presentation. So the recreational component for Gray is really important as well as our overall infrastructure. So, thank you.
I'm C L.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And I just wanted to make a special mention. I think this is the first presentation that you've made to County Council, Matt. Is that true? And I really just wanted to acknowledge Matt for the wonderful insight and innovation he's brought, not only to this file, but many others. We are so fortunate to have Matt on our team and he makes it look easy when it isn't. And the information quality and quantity that he's allowed through his skills has made a real difference to what we're able to provide to you and the decisions that we're able to make. He magically made the transit information appear on Google Transit and just any number of things like that. And Matt, we're so grateful. So welcome to this council and thank you so much for your great work and Stephanie too.
And Matt, these meetings are recorded so you can use it when you go for salary review. Counselor Desai.
First of all, I think salary reviews are closed session items. Second of all, it's, it's great meeting the person who put GTR on, on Google Maps because I did notice that and I meant to email you. Because I, I set it to, I set my Google Maps to transit when I was in Toronto. And when I got back, I forgot to change it back and it told me it'd take me 17 hours to get from Markdale to to Owen Sound on a Sunday. But I could get there. And it was on transit. So it's, it's great to meet you, Matt. Thank you.
Okay, so I see no other hands. With that said, it's perhaps time to call the question. I want to thank Matt and Stephanie. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Counsel, I, I see a bunch of people with bright jackets at the back of the room. But I'm going to suggest, and I apologize to you folks, we've been sitting for an hour. I'm going to suggest that we take a 10 minute break and come back. Well, actually it's nine minutes. We're going to come back. Oh, it's 11:04. Oh, yes. Oh.
You've got people on the phone, Kevin. Should we keep going?
Maybe, maybe that's best. Okay, maybe that's best. Okay, then Kevin, I'll call you up. This is with respect to the medical director's commendation awards.
Good morning, County Council Warden. Happy to be here today to help celebrate with the group of people are the great work the paramedics have done over the past year and a half. So just want to do some quick introductions. Paramedics that we're recognizing today, Lori Morton, Sherry Foster, Darren Clock, Reed Mill O'Neill, Sarah Brower and Jeff Adams. Here with me is our local medical director, Dr. Cio Meta. Online is Dr. Matt Davis, who's a regional medical director for Southwest Regional Base Hospital Program. Julie Olivera was the planning and support specialist with the Southwest Regional Base Hospital. Bruce Crowder from Essex Windsor EMS. I can't see them, but I, I take it they're online. And also at the back, we have Brian, a paramedic with us and Britt and Britt, and I think Jason and Kyle are here too. So we got a whole group of us. So happy to be here. And I guess just for now, just a, a Dr. Davis is just going to do a bit of an introduction about the award that the paramedics are receiving.
Thanks, Chief McNabb. For way of background, every year, the Southwest Ontario Regional Base Hospital Program receives multiple nominations to be considered for our Medical Directors Award of Excellence and the Medical Directors Award of Commendation. So our organization is responsible for providing 911 medical delegation and oversight for approximately 1,700 paramedics within the Southwest region of Ontario. As you can imagine, there's a lot of skill, knowledge and expertise that overlap between the 911 and community paramedic system. So this year, our medical council received 26 nominations for consideration of these awards. And these nominations include calls whereby outstanding clinical judgment and actions during a difficult or complicated clinical scenario was displayed. Or calls or initiatives where the delivery of excellent pre-hospital care was facilitated. Calls or initiatives where exemplary care goes above the call of duty and demonstrated leadership in a complicated multiple agency response. So after reviewing each of the received nominations, our medical council determined that the contribution that Darren, Sherry, Lori Reed, Jeff and Sarah made to the COVID-19 outbreak response, both within and outside of their community was worthy of recognition and celebration. You have worked together and with others to facilitate the delivery of excellent pre-hospital care while advancing safe practice and preparedness in our communities through collaborative partnerships and innovation. As such, it's an honor to provide Darren, Sherry, Lori, Reed, Jeff and Sarah with the Medical Directors Commendation Award. On behalf of the Southwest Ontario Regional Base Hospital Program, congratulations on this well-deserved award.
So I just want to give you a bit of the background information that, that, and the work that's been done over the past year and a half. So in, in January 2021, a request was made to paramedic services across Ontario to assist Essex Windsor EMS with an outbreak situation where they had it on a migrant with migrant farm workers and also in their shelter populations. We put a call across our service and without hesitation, Darren Clock, Sherry Foster, Lori Morton and Reed Mill O'Neill volunteered to assist. Traveling and staying in Windsor away from their family, they worked in two week rotations, offering assistance and support for approximately eight weeks. The work included working with the Windsor team, assessment and care of COVID-19 patients. They did COVID-19 testing and vaccinations among a month, number of other tasks. When, when they returned home, they returned back to their job. But in early June, there was an outbreak at a rooming house in Southern Gray County. These same paramedics responded without hesitation, along with Jeff Adams and Sarah Brower joined them. There were approximately 35 people who were under isolation, were unable to leave their premises due to COVID-19. There were residents on site who were experiencing signs and symptoms of COVID-19 that required treatment, as well as some residents had mental health and addictions concerns and other unmet social needs. Over the period of the next four weeks, these paramedics were on site daily, working along, eating these individuals in complicated situations. Paramedics worked alongside physicians, public health, mental health workers, addictions, nurse practitioners and numerous other health and so thankful for the social support agencies to aid these individuals. Through these four weeks, the residents and health, the residents' health and social needs were taken care of and we ensured their well-being. Response lessons learned by the paramedics that traveled to Windsor actually greatly aided us when we made these decisions that we had to make here to treat this similar situation. Since that time, this team has responded with our partners and other outbreak situations in Gray and Bruce Counties. And they actually spent a short stint helping out in Elgin County with a similar situation down there, taking their knowledge to them. To this day, we continue to work with the same group of partners to support residents of this, of the rooming house. We return to that area every two weeks and still remain engaged and care for them. The program now has expanded to one sound as well as we have a mobile response team. We've actually named our group now. We call SOS, Supportive Outreach Service. The Supportive Outreach Service meets people where they're at to provide personal centered wraparound support to improve health and social outcomes and help to bring equity to individuals who experience barriers to access to health and social services in Gray County. Our work's primarily done on the street. We work with people that are homeless and transient and they, some have mental health and addictions concerns. COVID over the past two years has been tough on all of us, looking back at this work that has been done. And what now would means for caring for people here in the future, it really, you know, can say that there is some bright lights that we've learned through COVID and I really want to say I'm thankful to each and one and every one of them because it really helps shine a light to the good stuff that's come from some tough situations. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Dr. Meta. As Chief McNabb and Dr. Davis have already outlined, these paramedics volunteered to provide services outside of the traditional scope of paramedic services. Supporting a system that was overburdened by COVID-19 and ensuring that patients and people in need of care were going to get it. The fact that they were willing to participate and lead in these initiatives is definitely deserving of recognition. So congratulations to all six of you for representing your field in an exemplary fashion.
And just before we hand out the certificate, if it's okay, Bruce Crowder, the chief of Essex Windsor EMS is joining us and he just wanted to say a few words.
Thanks, Kevin. And sorry it's late. Something popped up. I want to congratulate the six Gray County paramedics on their achievement of receiving this award. They stepped up to the plate when Essex County needed it to the most. Back in the beginnings of COVID, we were one of the hardest hit communities in the agri-food sector with temporary farm workers and outbreaks. They came down and helped out in the beginning when we formed our CREST team. And as you can tell, EMS is hot on acronyms, but our CREST team was called the Community Response and Stabilization Team. Community Response and Stabilization Team. They became valued members with that team, working alongside paramedics, nurses, nurse practitioners, and helping out the temporary farm workers manage their isolation endeavors. I'm extremely proud that these six paramedics went back to Gray County, took what they learned, and implemented it within your community. Because that's what it's all about, how we can share and share alike and grow in morph positives from a very negative experience. So on behalf of Essex Windsor EMS, on behalf of the community of Windsor and Essex County, and on behalf of the temporary farm workers, congratulations on this great accomplishment.
Thanks, Bruce. Okay, so do you want to help hand it to?
Sorry, I certainly could do that. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Davis and Dr. Meta for making the time to be with us here today, and we are extremely grateful, of course, for your ongoing support of our paramedics. I want to say congratulations to all of the award recipients. And Kevin, I just want to acknowledge you and indeed all of our paramedics, because as I mentioned in my closing remarks last year, I get so many compliments about Gray County's paramedics when I'm out and about. And you deserve it because you have really stepped up, and I want you to know that it's being noticed in the community, and for that, we thank you. Okay, come on down.
Okay, we are back. I just want to make sure that our friends online are with us as well. There we go. Okay, welcome back everyone. We'll be turning next to our second delegation from the integrity commissioners and their annual report. So with that said, I welcome Jeffrey Abrams and Janice Atwood Petowski. Hope I got that right.
Absolutely.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I will start out with some brief comments and then we'll respond to any questions if there are any. You'll see Jeff Abrams on another screen on on our Hollywood squares this morning. So thank you for having us here. So we we're bringing you your annual report. We think your annual report is a good news story. It speaks to councils ethical conduct, but it also speaks to an understanding of the role that an integrity commissioner plays and the services that we can provide to members of council. We talk in this annual report as we we do in all of our annual reports, really they're as much for yourselves as for public consumption. So it provides an understanding of what an integrity commissioner does for a municipality and its counselors and its members of local boards. So just as a reminder, we're here to assist on policy development. When required, we provide that service often in consultation with staff in order to provide ethical policies toward for councils consumption, including, of course, the code of conduct. And we are available to provide training and education, and we typically do that a couple of times during a term. Certainly at the beginning of term, there'll be an orientation session and hopefully we know in the case of great county, we've already got a a date notionally held for a training session, which is conducted jointly with all of your lower tier counselors as well. And then we are available whenever required to provide advice to members who may perceive a gray area that comes to their attention, something that they feel they need individual advice on. And we try to turn those around very quickly because we think that that is one of the most valuable services that an integrity commissioner can provide is to give a little bit of guidance when it's necessary and timing is always a key there. So we certainly do that. And finally, and this is the piece that most of the public often believes is the most important piece. We we see it as more a residual power, but we provide a mechanism for the public and others, members of staff or other members of council to raise issues if they see that there's something that they they think is a contravention or they think it's a breach. There's a mechanism they could go to, which is the integrity commissioner. And an integrity commissioner can provide a very timely and we think right sized response. It doesn't get lost in the sort of the huge judicial system, which can, as we know, take, you know, years to conclude. Rather, an integrity commissioner can provide fairly quick turnaround and a fairly scalable, reasonable remedy where one is required. So we think that that's an appropriate and very effective remedy available for many of the transgressions that might occur. So having said that, in our report to you, we do a bit of a summary of our activities for you really over the past year. And we have had the opportunity on four occasions to provide written advice to members on their request. And of course, we don't disclose what that written advice is other than to the member. It's confidential. But we think that that reflects a good understanding by members of council of the service and that they have availed themselves of this from time to time in order to avoid a bigger problem down the road. So always happy to be of service in that regard. In terms of complaints that we have received, there's been two complaints and one was effectively not within our jurisdiction and we explained that in the report. And the other one is still in the works. So it's not yet resolved or we're not in a position to report on it at this point. So that's really the work we've been doing specifically for you. Now, we act for the vast majority, I think, eight out of nine of the lower tier municipalities. And so those services are, we report those directly to the lower tier municipalities. We do have, because of our vantage point, because we act for better than forty odd municipalities across the province and some other bodies as well, municipally elected and appointed bodies. We have a vantage point where we're able to share sort of the themes we see on a recurring basis around the province. And so we try to share those because they provide sort of a cautionary tale, if you will. And so one of those, and we highlight in the in the report what those are, one area that we see from time to time and and not infrequently is where there's an improper disclosure of confidential closed session information. And so that's certainly something that council members have to understand and something that is mentioned always in counselor education and training with respect to their obligations under the code of conduct, but it it never lies in the hands of an individual counselor to decide that something unilaterally is appropriate to release. And when in doubt, seek some advice and guidance, if not from your own clerk, then from the integrity commissioner. A second area that we see arise around the province is issue of respect. We call it non disparagement. So whether it's disrespectful comments or disrespectful conduct, sometimes it's, you know, blatant harassment. Sometimes it's just minor, what we would say, microaggressions. And these are to be avoided. And particularly over the last couple of years, this has been an area that has sort of entered full blown on the scene because so many of the meetings are virtual and so much is is recognized by others when everybody's appearing on a TV screen, basically. So people are watching closely, they're listening closely, things are recorded. And so it's always a cautionary tale to govern oneself in a in a way that demonstrates decorum and respect for the views of others. So disagreeing with issues, that's fine, but not being disagreeable is very important. Recognizing and avoiding conflicts of interest. This certainly was underscored in the release of the judicial inquiry recommendations from Collingwood going back to about eighteen months ago. And certainly, this is an area where we field a lot of requests from members of council across our various client municipalities, because it does, it is a bit confusing at times. It's a complicated area. Some things are obvious and some things are not obvious. So we say to members, when in doubt, reach out, we're happy to provide you some quick advice and it certainly prevents a complaint after the fact. So always better to deal with it upfront and in advance. And finally, one of the themes that we see arising, not typically at the upper tier, but often at the lower tier is members who just don't stay in their lane. They get out of their lane, they try to get into the administrative side or maybe the operational side. And as I say, we don't see this happen a lot at the upper tier. But it's an important cautionary tale to recognize that there is a handoff between elected officials and council and those administrative and operational staff who have to do the work. So subject to any questions you may have, those are our comments.
Thank you very much, Janice and Jeffrey for being here. We do have some questions, starting with Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden. Thanks. Thank you, Janice and Jeffrey for the presentation. Particular interest was the last part that you mentioned about staying in your lane. And I know you mentioned it as more of a the separation between staff and council. But what about when it's a council of two different municipalities? And I'll give you an example to to provide context to to the question itself. Recently, there was things said at the at the Concarton Council meeting, which I'm not going to repeat because we all know exactly what I'm talking about. Now, the one thing that we deal with is stereotypes that people may or may not have about the area that we live in. To me, what was said at that council meeting perpetuates a certain stereotype, not just of people who live in this area, but also of councils. And I think it's it's an incorrect stereotype. So if if I bring a motion to upper tier or lower tier council saying that this council condemns what was said at that meeting by the person specifically, is that a case of going out of line or changing lanes? If you could provide clarity around around that, I'd appreciate it.
So thank you for the question, Counselor. That's it's a very good question. Because the issue was in the media, there's a general awareness of what was said. I think it's fair to assume that the matter is being looked at quite potentially by the integrity commissioner of that municipality. We don't know that for a fact, but that would be a fair assumption. It would certainly lie in anybody's, I guess, hands to refer that as a complaint to the integrity commissioner of that municipality. And I would assume that that may have already been done. And speaking to the issue of timeliness, one would therefore expect that that integrity commissioner would be probably bringing a report on it if it's substantiated in fairly short order. So one would expect it might be a three or four month turnaround. Having said that, I think that it it's not inappropriate for a council to denounce something or dissociate itself from something, or as you say, condemn something. But given that there's been no nothing other than media statements, it does seem to be premature for a municipality to be taking a position of condemning it as a fact when it actually hasn't been looked at. So I'm not suggesting it isn't recorded. It probably is, I don't know. But it does seem that there is a step missing before a municipal council basically finds fault or guilt without any real process. So I would suggest that perhaps a strong statement to to indicate that whatever particular council is looking at that motion clearly dissociates itself from that kind of comment. That would be a fair thing to do without you know, purporting to be judging, you know, sitting in as judges and jury over what was said and done without any real process. Does that make sense?
He's nodding his head, yes. Any other questions, council? I do not see any other hands. So with that said, I'm going to thank you, Janice and Jeffrey for your report and for your professionalism. I had the opportunity to use your services and it was a very prompt on a Sunday. I'll tell everybody, but I had my advice back within 24 hours on a Sunday. So thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, council, we are now at six B, correct? You know, with the tax policy that puts Mary Lou on deck. And I'm looking for mover and seconder to get the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Keveney, seconded by Counselor Desai. And Mary Lou, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So Report FRCW 0922. This report has been prepared with the guidance and assistance of Peter Fries from MTE. As part of the process, two calls were held with member municipality treasurers and their staff. Based upon this consultation, there was no recommended change from the tax ratios and subclass tax reductions that were applied in 2021. Just as a refresher, tax policy is an annual responsibility for Gray County as an upper tier municipality. Any tax policy decisions made exclude education as these rates are set by the province. Tax policy does not change the levy required, but rather it affects the distribution of taxes. Whether we change tax ratios, discounts or class structures, this would result in tax shifts between the property class levels as well as member municipalities. Owen Sound sets its own tax ratios and rates to raise their own municipal levy based on and the county portion based on the amount we requisitioned directly to them. This report has no impact on the 2022 approved budget. With approval of this report, the tax rate bylaw will be brought to the May 12 meeting, and the bylaw will set out how the levy will be distributed to the various property tax classes. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mary Lou. And I know that we do have Peter in my list of attendees online. So Peter, if you could make yourself. There you go.
Hello.
Peter, good morning. So I just wanted counsel to know that if they had questions, they can direct them to Mary Lou or in fact to you as our consultant. Counsel, are there any questions? Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden. Thanks. Just a quick question regarding the discrepancies in the amounts that each municipality is charged. We're seeing that there's some municipalities, I believe, as low as 3.3 million, some one as high as 18.2 million. The average across the nine municipalities, including Owen Sound, comes out to 7.3 million dollars. And the highest of this in this range is two and a half times that. So can Mary Lou sort of explain to us as to why, like if we're charging the same tax rate, why we have the discrepancies? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. It all comes down to the assessed value in each individual municipality. So the more assessment you have, the more that you're directing here. But you're correct, like the tax rates are the same, with the exception of the same. But you're correct, like the tax rates are the same with the exception of the city of Owen Sound, but they have their apportionment, the requisition that we send them, and then they calculate their own.
Anything to add to that, Peter?
No, the the county rate when it's calculated is applied on a property by specific basis. So each property, the 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 share by local municipality, including Owen Sound, their requisition is calculated by applying the county rates to their individual assessments on a property by property basis. It's simply the sum of those property specific liabilities that determine the level shifts.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do not see any other hands. So perhaps it's time to call the question. So all those in favor of the motion before you? Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you. And thank you, Mary Lou. So that's right, we have Anne Marie on deck dealing with item six C. The social services release, excuse me, social services relief fund phase five. That's actually hard to say. All right, I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Hutchison. Anne Marie, you have the floor.
Good morning, Council and Warden. This, this is just to express our gratitude, number one, that we received some more funding from the province in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. The funding will go to continued use in our community for our agencies. The funding is to support some of our most vulnerable populations through that are continuing to experience issues through COVID nineteen and into recovery. We are still going to continue to fund all of our agencies that are providing services and providing amenities to our most vulnerable population. But we're also going to look at increasing our staffing in the community itself. We want to enhance the coordinated access system that we have created for people that are experiencing homelessness. We've talked a bit in the past about our ability to implement our by name list and to create a coordinated system. We have a coordinator that has been working with us for probably about the last eight months and has worked with all of our agencies so that if someone does come to, no matter what door it is, they then have an access right onto our our list and can access services right away. That list is growing. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, I was before council stating that we had about fifty people on the list and of that about thirty-six were considered chronic homeless, experiencing chronic homelessness, which is six months or more in a year of of being homeless. Our list is now up to a hundred and thirty-nine. And of that, just under a hundred are experiencing homelessness on a regular basis in our community. A couple of reasons for that. Number one, just an increase with with people losing their housing for various reasons. Instability in their lives due to COVID nineteen and accessing services. And the fact that now we have a coordinated system which people are talking and we're able to better identify the number of people that are in need. So it's hard to tell what the actual need, how that actual need has been, but we know that we we're certainly seeing almost triple what we were a year a year ago. So with this funding, we would like to add some staffing to work with people that are on our by name list. They would be called their outreach workers, but they're actually system navigators. So they're going to help people weave through our various systems in order to get more supports, income, food, physical health, whatever they may need. And we're also going to put some of that funding towards the SOS mobile team. I know that Kevin and his team were here talking earlier. It's a great initiative, reaching people in our community where they are. And so we're going to be adding another staffing staff person to that list for outreach to just to provide some some support there. We're also going to be working with some of our community agencies, planning for the winter that's coming up so that we can look to providing some more out of the cold and so some more supports. So that's our plan for the funds and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from Council? I do not see any. Oh, Counselor Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Anne Marie, for the report. I'm very supportive of what you've proposed to do here. I think obviously there's a need in the community for some enhanced measures. How will we know or when would we know potentially when or if we're having a positive impact to try to reduce those numbers that you indicated?
So that's one of the aspects, good aspects of coordinated access system and the by name list. With that list, we're tracking people and we're talking to people. And with these staff people, we'll be able to keep in touch with people. So we'll know when they're moving out and when they're moving into the system. So for instance, last month, we had, you know, seventeen people that might have joined the list, but we know that we housed seven of them successfully. So that is all tracked. And the stat they can then people that are on the list, we may not lose them as much too, which is great. And we know that people who receive housing that often have been homeless for a while need those services. The services are key to a person remaining housed. So there's two different types of services. There's a service that they may just have provide services to them. So in other words, they're having maybe a social worker that they're involved with in in primary care and a mental health worker. And then there's other housing in which people require that twenty-four hours of service in order to succeed. And it may not be forever. It may not, it just may be for a while. That's the housing that we lack right now in Gray County. There's some, but there's definitely not enough. So with some of our previous dollars, that's why we're looking at those twelve units renovating twelve units of supportive housing. So between getting the system up and going, the whole idea of it is to be able to track people, to be able to help people. We know that people will will move in and out of the system. They may be housed successfully and something happens and they're on, they're not housed again. So that system will always be there to try and support people. It's 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 in its infancy. It's it's getting there. But we already know that we're having an impact, especially through our SOS mobile on on people that are in the community.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion before you? Anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much, Anne Marie. We're now dealing with item six D with Randy on deck. The installation of fiber conduit and county road works. I need a mover, please, to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Clumpus, seconded by, I saw a hand over here, Counselor Mel. Randy?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good afternoon, Council. I think it's just turned afternoon. The purpose of this report is to provide an update on what has been investigated to date regarding the consideration for including fiber or conduit installation as part of road reconstruction projects, which is noted in the county's official plan, that's something that the county will consider. This report also identifies the potential challenges discovered to date with respect to that, and also notes the implications of the Building Broadband Faster Act enacted in April twenty twenty-one. So this report was triggered as a result of a motion passed by Blue Mountains Council passed earlier this month requesting that Gray County provide an update on how Gray Road Two and Gray Road Thirteen projects conform with the official plan. And the official plan notes that when reconstruct reconstructing county roads or the CP rail trail, the county will consider installing fiber or conduit for future for future fiber to connect with the overall fiber network. First, I just want to highlight and note that Gray County is committed to enhancing access to broadband internet services. And in support of this goal, County Council has invested over a million dollars to SWIFT to date, which is supporting broadband construction projects throughout the county valued at just under seventeen million dollars and will serve nearly four thousand premises. In terms of considering installing fiber conduit as part of road reconstruction projects, as as noted in the county official plan, staff have looked into this option. And unfortunately, it's not as easy as just putting a pipe in the ground with the hope that a future telecommunications provider will utilize it to run fiber the future. In fact, when speaking with SWIFT, the concept of creating and adopting a single standard for fiber conduit was abandoned several years ago. The reason that SWIFT abandoned this concept is that internet service providers each have their own preferences and also have varying levels of willingness to share infrastructure. And therefore, the idea was deemed impractical. In addition to individual preferences, conduit needs to come conform to certain standards and be certified by an engineer, which is typically beyond the expertise of of county staff. From a Gray County perspective, Transportation Services has determined that the ideal location for running conduit or fiber is at the edge of the right of way, so as close to the property line as possible. And that's to avoid future disruptions or conflicts when future road reconstruction is to occur. The Gray Road thirteen project and the majority of Gray Road Two project are both what we call pulverized and paved projects. So that they're basically just taking out the existing surface and putting in a new surface. So this will not include excavation in the right of way, except for replacement of culverts and some storm sewers. With that, county staff and town Blue Mountain staff have discussed the installation at conduit at key key crossings as part of those two projects. So and so based on those further investigations, county staff have identified that there is potential to install conduit at some of those culvert crossings. Town staff have noted that they are working on a conduit specification that they're willing to share. And therefore, once that specifications are received, we can work with our contractor to incorporate this into some of those key crossings. As I mentioned, all other conduit fibers, we prefer to have installed at the outside of the travel portion of the roadway and to be at the expense of telecommunications providers. Completing conduit placement along the right of way during the construction, if a standard could be agreed upon, would not really result in savings for telecommunications providers when the work is being done on a cost recovery basis. And again, that's because it would be outside of the area of we're actually doing that road reconstruction is is the preferred method. We also note in the staff report that implementing a conduit standard that's not widely agreed upon by providers or that could not be used by a number of providers could be getting into the area of bonusing. And 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 since providers who could not use the conduit may perceive that their competitors have been granted an advantage, which is potentially unavailable to them. We did do some initial research as well to look at, see if other municipalities are doing this throughout the province. And we're not aware of a municipality that's developed a consistent process and ownership model for installing conduit for fiber. And it's likely because of the challenges that I noted previously. And saying all that, the province has passed the Building Broadband Faster Act, as I mentioned earlier, and and this is an act along with the guidelines and regulations to support new standardized and a more coordinated process and sets out collaboration expected amongst all partners and various stakeholders, including municipalities, to reduce barriers and to expedite a deployment of broadband infrastructure. The stated goal of of the nearly four billion program is to connect every region of Ontario to reliable high speed internet by the end of twenty twenty-five. Prior to that act being enacted, Gray County has been entering into municipal access agreements with our internet service providers to facilitate their fiber projects. And these agreements pre-qualify those providers for certain aspects of fiber projects and includes certifying that they have the appropriate insurance coverage in places also to protect their fiber and conduit that they're installing. Transportation Services have reviewed the expedited timelines because I know that was a concern in terms of the timeframes, which are ten business days upon receipt of a complete application for responding to right of way permits with distances of up to thirty kilometers and up fifteen business days for responding to distance of thirty kilometers or more. So staff have reviewed that and feel that that should not be an issue to meet those timeframes. And and have noted, in fact, that we're we're meeting those timeframes today. So we think that through the the act, including the recent amendments made by the Getting Ontario Connected Act, that this is the path forward for internet service providers to gain access to county and municipal right of ways. Again, with the preference that these would be installed outside of the travel portion of the roadway. Or using hydro utility poles to run fiber is is another option, which again would be typically along county road right of ways or municipal road right of ways. So the recommendation is to receive this report, to circulate this report to member municipalities, providing them with an update on what has been investigated to date, as well as some of the challenges as I noted. And that, of course, we're still continuing to work with internet service providers on supporting broadband in Gray County. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Counselor, so ever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Randy, for this update report. Considering the language in the official plan is prescriptive and says that the county in consultation with local municipalities, telecommunications providers and SWIFT will develop a fiber conduit specification for installation of fiber and conduit. And then says an ownership model will also be developed in consultation with SWIFT. If we changed our thinking of that, should we not amend the official plan if we're not doing that anymore?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Soever. And yeah, we can look at that wording in that policy. At the time, I think our hopes were maybe hoping that it was just as easy as putting in a pipe to the ground and and like I said, through further investigations, unfortunately, that's not the case. So as part of OP eleven, our housekeeping amendment, we can try to look at revising so that wording to soften it and to update it to what opportunities we think we can move forward with to make sure we're supporting broadband throughout our communities.
Yes, and and the the follow-up, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, go ahead.
So with regard to SWIFT, of course, the the projects that have already been approved for funding and the current funding is being used up. But as the province has shifted over to the accelerated high speed internet program and basically auctioned off all of the province in large blocks, leaving nothing for, you know, there's very little left over for any local providers or, you know, anyone else. The auction, we understand, at least from some proponents, is that they've been, they've been advised they weren't successful. So do we know who has been granted all of Gray County, like I know our, the block that Blue Mountains and most of Gray Highlands is in, you know, we've heard from two people that applied for it and they say they were told they weren't successful. So presumably, there's a successful candidate out there. We've been trying to find that without success from the ministry. Because obviously, the sooner that you can talk to the person who's going to serve the county, the the easier it will be and and perhaps you could even influence, you know, optimal placement of fiber. So do we know who has been granted the other blocks in Gray County?
Through you, Mr. Warden. No, we have not been advised who the successful bidders were, nor have we been advised as to the type of project that they were going to undertake because there was some discretion should they choose to, shall we call it, overachieve and go beyond the the base in many cases, which was cellular connection. We hope that that would happen, but as I say, we haven't received any confirmation from the province at this time.
Thank you for that, Madam CEO, because we have arranged a meeting with the Ministry of Infrastructure and we are going to be pushing them because they say, you know, we as municipalities should cooperate and make things move faster. But if you don't even get introduced to the person who's going to be building the network, it's it's not a positive first step anyway in getting it done quickly.
Thank you, sir. We also don't know whether the projects are going to be fiber or wireless. Thank you, sir. We also don't know whether the projects are going to be fiber or wireless or a mix. So there's a lot of unknowns yet. Councillor Mel, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Randy, for the report. Quite frankly, it's surprising to hear you say that any. Capabilities is beyond the abilities of our county engineers. But that being said. I concur with your your statement there that it's it's not as simple as just putting a pipe in the in the shoulder of the road. However, in the small urban or even larger urban centers. In Southgate's case, when we rebuilt Gray Road Nine through the middle of Dundalk. We worked very closely with the internet providers, as the county engineers did and will know. To allow the cables to be put in the road allowance and it was a very good partnership. It worked very well. And I think that's a model that could be followed in the future as well. So apologies to the engineers from the county for my comments.
Thank you for those comments. And yeah, our our engineering staff are fantastic, but maybe not fiber experts. It's it's quite complex system for sure, but in terms of the urbans, and that's where we do see potential for sure. There's going to be sections in in county roads that go through southern areas that there's just no opportunity. Outside of already existing sidewalks and and roadway. So we definitely see opportunities more of that way. So with that, we're looking for options in terms of building that in. At the front end of the process and even at the design stage. To be able to connect with those with local internet service providers to people to say, hey, we're moving forward this road reconstruction project within urban areas. Can we, is there anyone interested in terms of placing fiber and conduit at their cost as part of those projects?
Thank you. I do not see any other hands. So perhaps it's time to call the question on the motion to receive this report and to circulate it to our member municipalities. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much, Randy. Okay, we're now going to go back and deal with item, what was it, five C, right? Item five C. Let me get there. Okay, so that's dealing with the Blue Meadows Information Report. Put on the floor, councillor Soever, would you like to move it? Yeah, I need a seconder, please. Seconded by councillor Boardignom.
Yes, I think. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Just just one second. I let you know that we have Scott present as well, but if you would like to pose your question, I know that Scott is available. Scott, were you planning to make some sort of a presentation here or are you happy to just take questions?
Yeah, I'm at council's disposal here. And as councillor Desai has pointed out, I am standing between you and lunch. So maybe it's best that that I just take questions.
Okay, then councillor Soever, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warden. And this is a typical information report on a on a planned subdivision. One thing with the discussions we've had recently, both in the Blue Mountains and and at the. Affordable Housing Committee. I I do notice a lack of the word reference to affordable or attainable housing here. And currently, you know, the the county has allocated one percent of the tax base to dealing with accountable. I mean, affordable housing. And we we seem, you know, I am concerned that we're not addressing this in our planning. The Planning Act does state that section one. That the minister, the council municipality or local board or planning board in the tribunal and carrying out their responsibilities under the Planning Act shall. Have regard to, among other matters, matters of provincial interest such as. And there's a number of them listed and under item J, it's the adequate provision of a full range of housing, including affordable housing. And then it authorizes section three, one, to to the minister to issue provincial policy statements. So with regard to the policy statements. The. The the Planning Act, that's section three, five, says a decision of a council. Of a municipality, a local board or planning board, et cetera, shall. In respect of the exercise of any authority that affects a planning matter. Shall be consistent with the provincial with policy statements issued under subsection one. And shall conform with the provincial plans that are in effect on that date. And certainly this planning report refers to the provincial policy statement, which under. You know. Section two says that, you know, the. In considering a draft, section twenty-four fifty-one, sorry, fifty-one dash twenty-four. A says that in considering a draft plan of subdivision shall be. In considering a class regards shall be had, among other matters, to health, safety, convenience and accessibility for persons with disabilities. And the welfare of present and future inhabitants of the municipality and to A. The effect of the development of the proposed subdivision on matters of provincial interest as referred to in sub in section two. Which, you know, refers to affordable housing. So. You know, it's, I think it's quite clear, the Planning Act, and and I see it's mentioned in this report that. Under the the second page of the report, no, it's, I think it's the third page, under analysis of planning issues. It does refer to the Planning Act and the provincial policy statement. But it talks about. You know, natural, cultural, archaeological resources, but not affordable or attainable housing. Yet, you know, I think the provincial policy statement is quite clear. In that it does address. The under one, 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 healthy and livable communities are sustained by accommodating an appropriate. Affordable and market based range and mix of residential types, including single detached additional residential units. And that with regard to affordable housing under paragraph one point four three. It says, planning authorities shall provide for an appropriate range and mix of housing options and densities to meet projected market based. And affordable housing needs of current and future residents of the region. By establishing and implementing minimum targets for the provision of housing which is affordable to low and moderate income households. And which aligns with applicable housing and homelessness plans. So. These minimum targets that are referred to in in the Gray County official plan. They talk about a minimum target of thirty percent of new housing or units. Which would be affordable. And then there's a target for affordable units. So I am concerned that, you know, we're throwing a lot of taxpayer dollars that affordable housing. You know, I'm just concerned that maybe we're not using all the the planning tools and that. Do we even know what the price of these proposed houses are? Have we even asked?
So thank you for the question, councillor Soever. It's obvious that you've done a lot of research in preparation for this question. I might suggest in the future, when it's this detailed. And and complex, that you might put it to staff in advance. It's just a suggestion I'm making. I know that other councillors do that. And you might get better answers from staff. But Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to councillor Soever. Thank you councillor Soever for raising these comments. And we we do really appreciate. Council raising these comments because it does further empower staff. When we have these discussions that develop with developers at the pre-submission council state consultation stage. And even as as the application of have applications have been submitted to to really sort of beat that drama, if you will. To say this is a very clear priority of of county council. And and if you don't include. Some verbiage in in your reports and 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 speaking to affordable and attainable housing. It's a question that's going to be asked in the community, both from residents and from councillors alike. With respect to your specific questions, yes, I apologize for for not flagging that in my staff report. This was sort of. A preliminary report flagging some of the matters we need to consider, but you're entirely right. We need to consider the range of housing types as well. We certainly can, working with your staff at the town, get back to the developer to to ask them some further questions with respect to. The potential pricing of these units. What I will say with respect to this development. It is is it is encouraging with the range of units they're proposing. So they are proposing ninety-eight residential rowhouse units. They're proposing eighteen live work rowhouse units. And they're proposing seventy-five units above the commercial. So unlike, say, some developments of maybe five and even ten years ago, there's not a single, single detached dwelling in this. In this proposal. And and I have nothing, nothing against single detached dwellings. But we have our fair share across the county. So it's really, really encouraging to to see. The the development interest in more density in this regard. That said, I can't answer your question directly to suggest that. The the pricing of these rowhouse units or the units above the commercial will necessarily be in the affordable or attainable range. But I can commit to you that we will raise this with the developer and and try to seek answers. Prior to the public meeting being scheduled with the town and also prior to any further recommendations coming back before this council. So. Again, thank you very much for your comments. And if there's anything further, be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Scott. And you probably recognize that verbiage from my will say statement in the Ontario Land Tribunal case that. The county is involved in as well on the other development. Because we are making a point of it now in the Blue Mountains to ask all developers to consider. You know, what they can do about the attainable housing component because, you know, I think we have a very solid case. Before the Ontario Land Tribunal with the other developer that, you know, council is considering this as is. As quoted from the various acts. And so that is my well state statement. So county staff probably would have received that last week. With the materials for the file. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions on this matter? Seeing none, I will then call the question. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. So council, I'm in your hands. Lunch is ready, but we have just one item left. That's what I thought. I just thought I would. Check in with you. A resounding yes that we proceed with the agenda. So we're going to be going into a closed session. Bear with me. So that committee of the whole is now going to close session pursuant to section two, three, nine, sub two of the municipal act two thousand and one is amended to discuss one. Personal matter about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees moved by. Councillor Soever, seconded by councillor Robinson, sorry, councillor Hutchison. My apologies. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. So we'll just take a second to get organized.